All right, good evening, everyone. Before we start our board meeting, I wanted to start the meeting doing two things. One, acknowledging and honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the land that we habitate today is in honor and reverence of the lives, the sacrifices of Indigenous people. And secondly, I also want to give us a time to sing "Happy Birthday" to Superintendent Christine Fowler-Mack. Someone with a better voice than I should start. So, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Chop, chop, chop.
Happy birthday, dear Christine.
Christine Fowler-Mack, Superintendent Fowler-Mack.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
I'm hopeful that she celebrated her 30th birthday very well.
Again and again.
So with that being said, we now call this meeting to order of the regularly scheduled Akron Public Schools Board of Education meeting on 11 October 2021. We'll start with a roll call, please. Mr. Pendleton.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. We will now do our pledge of allegiance. I will stand. Ms. Alexander, do you mind leading it?
Sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is community and school reflections. Are there any board members who would like to give any community and school reflections? Ms. Autry, then Mr. Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to send a thank you to the principal and staff at Leggett CLC. I was invited over to meet with the descendants of Mortimer Leggett, who continue to give back. So that family regularly supports the school by donating books to the library every year. And then also, one of the family members is an author, so they were there as well to donate that book to the library. So just a nice opportunity to meet the namesake descendants of Leggett. And again, a special thank you to Mr. Blonheim and staff at Leggett for inviting me.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, I was able to go to Ellett High School, Ellett CLC, today. And I was very happy because I got a chance to meet with my mentee, Abigail Kearns. We had lunch, and it was nice. And we had good discussion. Abigail wanted to talk a little bit about dress code, and I thought it was nice, a nice discussion in reference to dress code. Wasn't anything really negative, but it was just talking about dress code for everyone, staff, students, everyone. Also, Abigail gave me some good news, which is nice. I thought that she said that the students are very happy to be back at Ellett. They were happy, they've been there learning. There was a lot of teaching and learning going on when I was in the building. The halls were very quiet. Teaching was going on in the classroom. Students were learning, and she was happy about that. Said a lot of her fellow classmates were happy as well. And then something was really nice that she shared is they have a mental health piece that they do at the school that students can get onto Google, and they can check in, and if they need help, they can do it anonymously and ask for help, to get help for themselves with their mental health for them, the family members or whomever it is, or if they're having some issues. And I thought that was really nice because, you know, during COVID, there's a lot that went on with mental health and hurt a lot of kids that probably went without getting some help that they probably needed. And so I thought that was really nice that they had that for the students at the school. And I think all of us, including board members, superintendent, administration, teachers, everyone needs to make sure our mental health is together because there's a lot that went on this past year, and we all need to do a mental health check-in. And so I made sure that I did my mental health check-in with Abigail, and everything went well. She said I'm okay, so I'm happy. So, but I was glad to be able to meet with her today. And then, Mrs. Mansfield, do the honor. We went to the OSBA Regional Conference last week, and it was a nice conference. A lot of things are going on, a lot of things are happening. But we have a teacher that Mrs. Mansfield is going to mention who got an award. And I thought it was nice to always have someone from our school district that can get an award. So I'm most happy for that. It made me happy being there that we're from Akron Public Schools, and we got a chance to talk to school board members from other districts. And we should be happy that we're from Akron Public Schools. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mrs. Mansfield, then Dr. Hall.
So I do have a certificate. It's in my car because we had a meeting before the meeting, and I am a little bit remiss by leaving that in my cars. But that was to recognize Maggie Oliver for, to be recognized by the OSBA for her work as a teacher in our district. And she's a former Teacher of the Year for the district, and she's being recognized at the state level as well. So I wanted to share that. That was wonderful. I didn't know that was going to happen on Wednesday night, so that was great.
Nick needs that.
And it's always nice to have dinner with Mr. Alexander, so that was definitely worth our time. I also had the chance last week to visit two buildings. I got to go to Portage Path and to Resnick. And at both schools, I was thrilled to be greeted by student ambassadors, which is the first time that's happened so far this year. They were so excited to have someone to show around and did such a great job. I love, the fifth graders met me at Resnick and were walking me around by themselves. So that was, you get all the inside scoop that way, you know? And so they were real excited to do that. I love how they show the kids' work, especially in the grades that they don't really know what's going on, so they just kind of make up what they see. So that was really fun. But they were very excited to be back in school. And I talked to everyone from the secretary to those kiddos to the principal, and that was great. And then at Portage Path, I had the full tour. There was French spoken to me. There were, I got to see the Ivy principals that they're working on. So was extremely excited to have those kiddos get to show off their school. And they were incredibly proud to show off their school. So kudos to both those buildings. And that's it.
Yeah, thanks. Greetings and salutations, everybody. So we have on our desks here this Project Grad, and I had a chance to attend this virtually on Saturday. And I just want to congratulate Jackie Silas Butler for her leadership in leading the Project Grad program here. They celebrate their 15th anniversary on Saturday. And here's a program that's provided a lot in the way of scholarships to APS students. And a number of the students were there going back to 2011, as a matter of fact, to kind of share their stories and kind of, like, basically, where are they now? What are they doing now? And so it was very, very uplifting. Also, they also honored Mr. Bill Ellis, who is the editor-in-chief of The Reporter, you know, which is, you know, Akron's only black newspaper. They serve parts of Canton as well. And so he was honored as well. And if you haven't ever picked up a copy of The Reporter, you need to do that. And they also honored Danielle Kimmel, who was a partner at Apple as well. But it was a very well-done virtual event. There's a very talented young man named Shawn Porter, who was performing on the keyboard, a book-to-graduate, I'm sorry, a book-to-graduate with the Baldwin Wallace. Also, a Project Grad recipient in the past, who was very talented. And then, of course, finally, they ended it with Al Roker, who was the keynote speaker who gave very inspirational remarks. And so, again, just want to congratulate Jackie Silas Butler and Project Grad on all that they have done. And hopefully, with our continued support, we'll continue to keep doing as we move forward in the future. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Any other school or community reflections? Okay, hearing none. As there appears to be no request to address the board, we will move to our recognitions. Our recognition for the First Congressional Church of Hudson. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Mansfield.
Mrs. Sabeta, would you like to join me up here for this? I'd love to have you up here. So first, great thanks to Deb Volk for taking a resolution that I hope to have Kim and I put together to recognize the Hudson First Congregational Church and to find a way to make it even more lasting. So thank you, Deborah, for that. We have with us this evening Reverend Peter Wiley, the senior pastor of the First Congregational Church of Hudson, and Sue Weimer, who's the co-chair with Chris Storer of the First Congregational Outreach, which is the first serve that we talked about. Now, I mentioned them, if you'll remember, after September 11th, they had had a large group of folks come out. But this is not the first year. This is the 10th year that they've been working in the North Hill community, so we would like to recognize them this evening. The North High staff and student body, along with the Akron Board of Education, would like to recognize and thank the First Congregational Church of Hudson, organizers of the First Serve Project, for their tireless work and commitment to North High School and the greater North Hill community over the last decade. North High School and the North Hill community have been the exclusive recipients of dedicated volunteers for the past four years and have benefited in countless and immeasurable ways. This year alone, over 450 volunteers gathered at North High School on September 11th, 2021, and completed projects including refurbishing the teacher's lounge, which was looking amazing. I know, I'm sure it's fabulous now. It was still in process when I was there and just looked amazing. Painting murals, framing photos, cleaning display cases and classrooms. A soccer clinic for neighborhood children was held on the front lawn and staffed by volunteers. That was more fun than anything. Previous projects include landscaping the memory garden and creating a sidewalk mural representing the international North Hill community. The dedication of the First Serve Project team has impacted the staff and student of North High School as well as the surrounding community. In addition to the visible enhancements made to the physical building and grounds of North High School, First Serve has left an indelible mark with relationships built and developed while selflessly and generously donating their time and talents to North High School. I am honored this evening to present the John S. and James L. Knight Foundation Community Partnership Award to the First Congregational Church of Hudson First Serve. And I'm just going to read the "now therefore" part of this resolution. Now therefore, by the Board of Education, the Akron City School District, Section 1, that the John S. Knight and James L. Knight Foundation Community Partnership Award be awarded to the First Congregational Church of Hudson First Serve Project. That the Akron Board of Education offers its sincere gratitude to the First Congregational Church, First Serve, in their support of Akron Public Schools, our students, and our families. And that a copy of this resolution be made part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education, and a copy be presented to First Serve Church. So if you all can come up, this is then going to also hang in the hallway. And we're going to have you all, your names added to it, your church's name added. This award has been given four times in the past, so you're only the fifth recipient of this award. And we'll see if you guys can see. Mark's going to send a picture of us. He likes to do that. He sneaks up on us.
They're smiling.
There we are. Kim, do you want to say anything?
So first, thank you to the board and Superintendent Fowler-Mack for allowing us this opportunity to thank First Serve. They are absolutely amazing and the work that they have done at North High School. I am so blessed that I've been able to have the relationships and form these relationships with them, as well as our students, our teachers, and really just our North Hill community. So thank you very much for everything that you do for our students at North High School as they truly are changing the lives of our kids. Thanks.
Really quickly. First, I apologize for our name. That mouthful of "congregational" is not easy. But what I really wanted to say is, thank you. That it's a pretty amazing thing, the trust that the Akron Public Schools, starting back with Finley and now with North High, and especially with Kim, that you would trust a group coming out from Hudson, let alone a church, and welcome us so beautifully that we are so fortunate and we are thankful to each of you that we get to share in what is an incredible school system and to experience that with you. So the real thanks should be coming from us. Thank you for giving us that gift.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again to the First Congressional Church of Hudson. We now move to approval of previous meeting minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting on 27 September 2021. Then entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mrs. Mansfield. Are there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Pendleton.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have personnel recommendations. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Before we begin our asking you to consider the personnel recommendations, I'm going to ask Kathy McVeigh to come to the side microphone. We're going to make an introduction.
Chuck, can you come up, please? He didn't want to have to come up here, but I had to make him come up. Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Charles Yurkey. Chuck graduated from Coventry High School, and after graduation, he earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in technology from Kent State University with a networking focus, minoring in computer information systems. He also has an Associate's Degree of Applied Business in Computer Technology, also from Kent State University, and as well as additional coursework towards a master's degree. Chuck started working for Akron Public Schools as a substitute teacher in 2006, and then was hired full-time in 2010 in the technology department. He became a desktop support analyst in 2011, and then a systems analyst after that. And then he went on to teach for one year as an information technology instructor at East CLC. But his passion for working in technology services brought him back downtown as a senior systems analyst in 2014, where he has been until now. Tonight, we are recommending him for the coordinator of technology services position. Congratulations.
Just wanted to take this opportunity to thank members of the board, Superintendent Fowler-Mack, Treasurer Pendleton. I really hope that I can do everything I can to keep up the good work, to at least some of you believe in me. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McVeigh. It's always a pleasure when we can see our own step into other positions. With that, I would like to recommend the approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16, and the additional resolutions in items 17.1 and 17.2.
So moved.
Has been properly moved by Dr. Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on the motion? Did I get that wrong? I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So without any discussion, we'll move to roll call vote.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our resolutions and motions on the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions on the, and motions on the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick. Is there a second? Did I get that wrong? Oh, seconded by Ms. Autry. Is your thing not working? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I made the motion. So moved.
Oh, you seconded. Oh, Lord. My ears are hearing backwards or something. Okay, so it's been properly moved by Ms. Autry, seconded by Mrs. McKittrick. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Pendleton.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Superintendent, business affairs recommendations?
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Members of the board, I wish to recommend the approval of the business affairs recommendations presented in category 23. Again, they have been reviewed and are in proper format.
Thank you very much. We'll accept the motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mrs.
Second.
Is it properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded, I believe, by Mr. Bravo? Any discussion? Mrs. Autry. Ms. Autry.
Thank you. Actually, it was just a question of clarification. I noticed in 23.6 and 23.19, we're purchasing buses. We're purchasing eight buses from one company, and then we're purchasing one orthopedic bus. I was just wondering what an orthopedic bus is. I kind of have an idea. I thought I was just worth clarifying what an orthopedic bus is.
Sure. Mrs. Volk, would you like to speak to the capabilities of that?
An orthopedic bus is an actual bus that allows a wheelchair student to be easily added to the bus by using a ramp that comes off and down to the road level, allows the driver to access that ramp, elevate the student to the inside of the bus. And then, once inside the bus, the wheelchair is properly secured and strapped, so that as it travels, the student is not only secure in the wheelchair, but the wheelchair is secure in the bus. It is a very specific type of bus, and it has limited number of seats in it to accommodate the rails for the wheelchair. And then it has additional seats because some of our orthopedic students do require nursing services during their travel, so that we can have the appropriately assigned aides or nurses travel with the driver and the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually had a question as well.
Dr. Hall?
Yes.
And before you go, I just want to, we've been asked to make sure that we speak closer to the mic, so if we all could do that, please. Dr. Hall?
Sorry, I just had to, it had to be done, sorry. Anyway, so I know, so obviously, to your point, Ms. Autry, we are purchasing buses. I just wanted to, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. I just wanted to ask, so are we making progress with hiring people to drive those buses? I just wanted to, I know there was a comment about that. I know that we've had some driver shortage issues. I don't know if those have been fully resolved, or Mark's driving one of those buses. So just curious.
We successfully interviewed a number of people during our recent HR job fair that was held here in early October. And Mr. Andexler and the staff are working on pursuing those candidates that are eligible. We have also obtained a few more routes through our service with Peterman so that we could up that service as well to accommodate the timeframe. So we are adjusting as quickly as possible as we train those students, our students, they are students when you train them, in-house to become CDL drivers. And we are also in the process of making sure that they get their requirements to be school bus endorsed. So we are moving very quickly, as much as we can, to accommodate those needs.
Basically, I'm off the hook, then, what you're trying to tell me?
I'm always happy to train you.
All right, just checking. Okay.
Thank you.
Are you credentialed that?
I don't, I don't.
That would be great.
How to get that done, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Mrs. Mansfield.
I just wanted to point out the renewal and give a shout-out or thanks, I guess, to the University of Akron for their agreements to continue as partners for our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, Mr. Pendleton, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to superintendent's report.
Thank you. And tonight, I don't have an extensive report, but I would like to just bring awareness to two engagement efforts that we have underway. One being just to raise awareness again that we are seeking feedback and input. As you are aware, board members, and as we've presented to our community, internal community and community at large, we have received funds, the elementary and secondary education school emergency relief funds that we call the ESER funds. And we want to make sure that in planning to allocate those funds, that we are doing so with the input of all stakeholders. So as we stated we would a few months ago, this is the meeting where we really want to say that we're in the process of gathering feedback. So we developed a website, and on this website, we provided everyone with high-level information, and we also asked for feedback. So on the website, there's information that says what is ESER, one, two, and three, because we have received resources in the past. Most notably, during the pandemic, we received resources to be able to support our students and our staff. But now, so on the website, we're sharing what we did with those resources. So where we spent ESER one and two funds, and then we are seeking feedback from all stakeholders, parents and community members and internal staff about the priorities for this current set of funds. A survey link was made available and was advertised on Monday, October 4th, and it will close on Monday, October 18th. So we still have a few more days. If any of you would like to give feedback, or if you would like to continue to support us in communicating that opportunity to give feedback about those priorities with all that you come in contact with. We've had very good response from parents and guardians, and so we want to keep that up. And again, the opportunities still exist. And then we want to make the community at large aware that their feedback is also welcome, so they can give feedback. And then, from all of the educators internally as well, we want to hear from them as well. The survey is translated in our many different languages, so that support is, has been made available, and there are links that will make sure that persons receive the opportunity to give feedback in a manner that supports them in doing so. So again, October 18th, Monday, is when that will close. And then we'll be excited on the 25th to be able to share with you a bit of what we've learned. So we will share at a high level as a next step about what we learned about the priorities coming from our various stakeholders, and share with you how that's lined up to some of the ways we've already talked about using those funds in our board meetings. So at a high level, we'll share about that, but also through the Instructional Policy Committee, and then also through the Finance Committee of the Boards Committee meetings, we will also we will also be engaging you in a deeper way around that. The second opportunity for engagement that we are working through is really supporting the awareness with our families and with our students about the benefits of getting vaccinated for those that are able to do so, and then where they can take advantage of those opportunities. So we have a Roll Up a Sleeve campaign going on, and our ultimate goal is to really, again, share information and to be a source of support to our families and our students. Towards that end, we've also dedicated a space on our website to having an FAQ to make sure that we can answer questions that may arise about COVID and any of the responses to it, and also, again, the vaccination clinic sites. We also used our space on our website to introduce the health practitioners that are at each of our buildings, so that persons could put faces with names to know who's available to them in our community. And then we also introduced a new face, because we have a brand-new partner that is affiliated with Akron Children's Hospital, Dr. Andrea Sims, who has been working even more closely with us to be a source of support and to share some of her thoughts and her writing about what she's come to know, because she has a lot of patients and/or has seen the impacts of COVID. So to have that trusted medical practitioner available to us and willing to work with us as we support our families has been something we're very grateful for to Akron Children's Hospital and just in our community. So again, the goal of our campaign is to keep our children healthy and in school, to reduce vaccine hesitancy, to educate our children and their families about the benefits of vaccines, and to improve access to vaccines, to simply get more people vaccinated who are able to do so. We believe that we want to be part of the solution and believe that our relationships position us to do so. So Roll Up a Sleeve is still very actively being communicated across our district, and so please, if anyone asks you, we are also getting ready, because we anticipate soon that we'll have information about the five, the children that are five to 11 years old. And so we're watching very carefully what's been happening in the medical community, but we do anticipate having word, and once we have that word, we will be part of the solution again, supporting where we're able to do so. So those two opportunities for engagement is what I wanted to leave tonight.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Dr. Hall?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank you for that update, Madam Superintendent. I'd say a follow-up question, which was, the vaccine clinics that we're doing for the students, do we have any, those have already begun, correct?
They have.
Do you have any information to share on how those are going? You know, are we seeing, you know, are they, are they successful in the way that we're trying to define success as far as a number of students and whatnot? Would be, is kind of my first question. And then, and then keeping with that, thinking about the access issue, you know, what plans do we have to, to address staff vaccinations as well? So very, fully cognizant of the parties around our students as well, but also want to make sure that we're providing at least some opportunities for those who take care of our kids to also get vaccinated in a way that's hopefully convenient for them.
Absolutely, and so I'll start there, if you don't mind. Equally, in considering that there are, there is information available, an opportunity that exists for our students, we're also actively doing the same sort of thinking and planning for staff as well. As we know, right now, we do have the ability to, our staff has the ability to get booster shots, some of them under certain situations, and so we have been working with the medical community to arrange, you know, kind of what that might look like, so how we might make that available. In the midst of also preparing for how it is, we offer support to our students, again, five through 11, which, you know, you might note is a large group of students in the community. So we're actively engaged on both fronts, as seeing, you know, how it is, we can support both groups of persons. You asked a bit about the success of the high school campaigns, or excuse me, high school clinics that we've been offering around the city, and Deborah, I'll ask if there's anything more you want to add. I would say the organization of it has been highly successful, the ease of it, so we have had the cooperation of the medical organizations to support us in doing so. I would say the numbers of students that we would hope to see going through those clinics because of the numbers of students we know are still not yet vaccinated, it wasn't overly strong, so those were, you know, really the low traffic. We are planning to open those clinics up a bit more and to also be a source of access for the community at large, so we've been talking about that as well. But we're going to continue to talk, talk about it and to make sure that we're working in partnership with a variety of organizations, our council persons, things of that nature, to make sure that everyone who has a group of persons that they regularly communicate with can include information about the vaccination clinics. Anything more?
To Superintendent Fowler-Mack's points, as you sit here, we are working with Summit County Public Health at Bookdolt this evening from the hours between four and seven, and although that particular clinic was certainly advertised to all of our families, we opened it up to the community, and we reached out to Councilman Neal, who acknowledged that he would get that information out, so that we're hoping to get more people to realize that we have an easy, accessible, very successful process. We did our first last week at Ellet, and Summit County was highly complimentary on our setup. They said it couldn't have been better, so we will continue to do that. Second shots will be available for the first two Mondays of November, and we are working with Summit County to get those successful pieces of information out as well. And then second shots for students will be the last little bit of October, just before November, for those who participated in our student clinics. All righty?
So follow-up to that. So, and so my question is more about logistics. So, and this is what I was asking before, so if we're not seeing, you know, huge turnout for these clinics, have we had any thoughts around allowing these clinics to essentially sort of serve as double duty, so basically, students can get shots, and then staff can come and get booster shots within the context of the same clinic?
At this point, the vaccine is ordered for the students that, and families that apply, so you pull the vaccine for the number of applicants.
Right.
We did offer the availability for staff that was new, since we did our vaccines last February, March. If they wanted to be part of that process, they could certainly get an application and take care of it last week, and we will do it the end of October. The booster shots are currently only available with Pfizer, which is what is currently available, and we're working with Summit County, Akron Children's, and as Mrs. Fowler-Mack said, with other health authorities, because we want to make sure that they are readily available. And I've actually been informed that a number of our own staff have taken advantage of going to, say, the local RiteAid's, Walmarts, Walgreens, because they are eligible now, and they would like to get it as soon as they are six-month fully vaccinated. And there is, when you do fill out the consent form, if you've had, say, a recent vaccine within 30 days, you have to keep that as an awareness as well. So those people who may have gotten a flu vaccine may not be truly eligible for the COVID yet until that 30 days expires. So it is an individual effort to get people notified, and we're being very upfront and forward with our availability in those that we have made contacts with other entities as they roll theirs out.
Gotcha. So let me ask a yes/no question, then. So, so are we going, so do we plan to offer a vaccine clinic for staff as it relates to boosters?
We are in the process of planning what we can offer at this time for boosters.
I'm sorry, is that, was that a yes, or?
It's in the middle of discussions. I can't give you a date. We don't have a discussion at this time, a date at this time.
And we really do have to work with the medical organizations.
No, I agree.
To see, so again, we are in the process of planning for all involved. We can't definitively say, here's exactly what we can offer and what dates. It is our intention to service our staff and our students, but we have to work through
Sure.
What the providers can offer.
That's what our intention to, okay.
Yep.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Ms. Folk. Thanks, Ms.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have our, the president's report. I only have two items. One, we're embarking on that time where we have to begin the evaluations of our two staff members. So we're starting with Mr. Pendleton, so we'll start that conversation tonight, and the hope is we can wrap that up by November, and then we'll, we'll start with the superintendent after that. As most of you know, there's two different types of evaluations. We do a formative and a summative, and so they both happen, one at the end of the academic year and the other by the end of the calendar year, which is July 30th, I believe. So it could be confusing, but, so we'll be starting that. The second thing is, I want to take the time to thank Dr. Hall and Mrs. Mansfield for working together to put to the draft of our onboarding of new board members process together, and this is an opportunity for us to have a brief discussion around what else we want to put in that document and that draft, and then begin to put the plan together. As we know, we will have new board members joining us in January, and that means, unfortunately, we will be losing two of our board members who are departing. And so with that being said, one of the things that we always want to do is make sure that we make things better for those that come after us, and we want to make sure we put this program together, so that all the new board members can have a good orientation to the board. And with that being said, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Hall and Mrs. Mansfield. They want to go over some of those contents, or the contents of that onboarding process, and then open the floor up for discussion from the board.
Sure, yeah, I'll jump in. So as you mentioned, Ms. Mansfield and I sat down and spent some time walking through what we thought a good organization plan would look like, as far as what would be some of the required components to doing this in a way that made sense. And so, and so the board members all have that document that was sent out for their perusal as well, and I have my notebook ready to take notes on things you like, or want to change, add, subtract, multiply, divide. But really, at a high level, it was really about doing this in phases. So basically, phase one would include actively encouraging the two folks, the two presumptive new board members here, which would be Job and Carla, to begin attending our public board meetings and public committee meetings. I think that's really important. I think all of us who were on the board, you know, prior to getting elected, spent time coming to board meetings before the actual election, right? So we want to ensure that they can kind of come and kind of see, you know, things like boardsmanship, I think is an important example, not to mention, you know, getting a feel for what are the current issues that we're talking about, right? What's relevant now? And from a timeline standpoint, that's something that can begin, there's no impediment to that proceeding immediately, you know, so long as this body is in support of that invitation going out. And then, and Ms. Mansfield, I think I mentioned as well that in the past, we've had presumptive board members actually sit at the table with us. So again, that's something that we could talk about as well, but, and then phase two, you know, really sort of talking about setting up meet and greets, and so those of us who are newer to the board had a chance to do that in our first year, where we had a chance to meet with folks like Ms. Folk and Ms. McVeigh and others, you know, as related to understanding sort of what they do, a day in a life looks like for them, and so really providing an orientation around their departments, their staff, what they do. I mean, basically, you know, their whole raison d'etre, if you will. And again, that's something that hypothetically could begin immediately. There's no proprietary information that's showed, that's really shared there. And then, and then last but not least, probably the most robust portion was kind of the phase three, which is sort of after election, after, after the oath of office, you know, where we would cover topics, like, for example, I have it titled in the document, like Board Leadership 101, you know, so really talking about emotional intelligence focus, so things on, so talking about collaboration, collegiality, the importance of that, or as, or as Reverend Walker used to put it to us, how to be, how to disagree without being disagreeable. Again, so that's something I think we're all very mindful of. And then kind of a 201, where we kind of talk through ORC-defined roles, responsibilities of board members. I think that's important, what, you know, we have that regulatory background. And then really asking each of our, each of our committees, finance, equity, instructional policy, which thinks that, which thinks that they're the best committee, you know, and equity, which is really the best committee, you know, giving briefs, you know, to each of our new board members around sort of what they do, right? So, and then also really talking with, and I really, we really had Ryan, I'm sorry, Mr. Pendleton in mind here, with talking about more of a legislation brief, since he's been so involved, you know, both past president, hopefully the future, with things such as the Fair School Funding Act and things like that. And then also, we mindful of Ms. Fowler-Mack, they provided, you know, really robust org chart history, you know, several months back, that we, that really found valuable, and think that that could be a great learning tool to kind of teach sort of where we've been from an org chart standpoint, and where we are, and maybe where we're going. Not to mention, it helps attach, again, helps to see it again, to reinforce, to see everybody's, all of you who are here and your staffs sort of on a one-pager, if you will. And then, and then really a communication cadence brief, right? So really thinking about how do we report info to senior staff, and how are things elevated to the appropriate senior team members? Because I think as we'd all recognize, it's not, it's not an individual board member's roles to sort of get involved in, in the weeds and minutia, if you will. That's what we have, very smart, talented teams to really handle a lot of these issues, right? So, and then also really providing an overview on each cluster that we would ask. That'd be more of a combination of senior staff or board liaison for that cluster. So for example, if I'm the book, I'm sorry, not if, I'm the book to a cluster liaison this year, maybe myself and, you know, whether it's Ms. Hughes or someone else from senior staff, you know, I'm sorry, Ms. Hughes, not senior staff, but senior staff and/or select folks from that cluster to provide a cluster overview. So, because each cluster's different, they have their own personality, own culture, and so, and they all have their own idiosyncrasies, if you will, that could be helpful in thinking about performance, discipline profiles, key programs, service offerings, athletics, you know, college and academy pathways for each of those schools, and Ms. Teck, perhaps it could be helpful with that as well with her expertise. And then also just, and then just a frank discussion of the overall challenges and opportunities in each cluster. And then kind of the last thing that we had here was presentations on or from each of our key community partners like GAR, United Way, Canexus, et cetera, and really that conversation's fixated on, I'm sorry, really focused around how they support and/or interact with the Akron Public Schools, and really, you know, that last bullet point, these could also functions as meet and greets as well. You know, so that was kind of an overview, very, very kind of black and white. And so, Ms. Mansfield, I know I was kind of reading through each of those things. Is there any color commentary that you wanted to kind of jump in? And again, thank you for your partnership and working with me.
Absolutely. The only thing that's come to mind, actually, over the weekend while I was reviewing this, was we did talk about the possibility of visiting some of the physical plants as well. There were some buildings that I had never been in for, oh, gosh, I don't know how long it's been, Deb, when I finally went down and got to see distribution and see how that works, and how amazing it is to see that. So visiting some of the buildings that are integral to making the district work, but also understanding, you know, perhaps you've never been in a, to understand what a cluster is. So what does that really mean? And have you ever been in an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school in our district, just to see what that looks like? So the physical plant part, I forgot about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dr. Hall, and, oh, gosh, there was one more. See, this is terrible. When it's a Monday, holiday Monday, my brain is just half-checked out, I guess. But just making sure that there's an understanding of those things. But just making sure that there's an understanding of, of those things. Because I know that during the pandemic, that was one of the things that we all missed the most, was being able to see the students. There it is. The student school board members would be the only other thing.
Right, right, right.
And introduction of why that's important and what we, what we hope that not only that they get out of it as a leadership opportunity, but also that we get out of it from their voice at our table. So those were just two other things I saw over the weekend that I wanted to make sure that, I know that we talked about.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
That were really important, so.
Thank you.
And I, I thought Ms. Autry's suggestion was really good. Do you want to talk about what that was? Because I thought that was fantastic.
Sure. Being fresh off of the Communications Ad-Hoc Committee, I just thought it was really important that we include an orientation to board docs and how that works and just the Google system. Because I came into the district as a Microsoft Office kind of gal, so that's all been a, a learning curve for me. So I think it's important, and, and thank you to both of you for this foundational document. I think it's so important, us being an educational entity, that that extends throughout the organizational chart. So I appreciate your work on this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on our onboarding process? Mr. Bravo?
Yeah, I think as you're, hopefully we'll put together a resource packet as well. And I know, Ryan, you have a lot of good documents and the calendar and the alphabet soup. We had, we have a document somewhere from, that's shared with all of us board members that has all of the acronyms on it. And thinking about programs and specialty schools as well. I mean, we have a lot of programs out there that you're not going to find until you start hearing someone talk about LEAP and you're not sure what it is. So there are a lot of things that, the ground programming that probably should be discussed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Alexander?
You know, and also maybe something, since we, we do have clusters, is maybe getting them to understand city council and how we can kind of work together sometime on projects, but at least so they'll know who their, their cluster or their ward person would be.
Right. Okay. Anyone else?
How long, quick question. How long will we have to, to review and add some comments to this?
That's a great question. That's where I was going.
Okay.
Um, I, I, we want the process to be finalized by our next board meeting, which means that if you could get feedback to Dr. Hall and Mrs. Mansfield by the end of this week, we can put all that together. And like they said, we want to approach the candidates and share with them some things that we would like for them to start doing even before the election. So I would like to be able to have the board's kind of blessing to move forward with that and then invite them, which all meetings are all public, so they can come if they wanted to, but it'll give us an opportunity to just have that conversation. Mr. Bravo?
Dr. Hall, are you in there now? And are you in that document now?
No, no. Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, I have my, my Word version that I'm taking notes on.
Okay, because the one you shared is, is not the Google Drive version? Do you want us to add?
You can add it in there, yeah. Speaking of orientation, I don't ever use Google Drive for documents, so I'm a Microsoft person too, so I will read what people put in there, but I don't actually put documents into the Google system. So maybe I T can give me a tutorial on, on how to do that. So good, good catch, Ms. Autry. So, yeah. But Mr. Bravo, if you'd like to put this document in there for folks at it, I'd be most appreciative.
All right.
Behind the mask, he's actually cursing me right now. You just can't, you just can't tell, he just has the mask on, you know, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. And again, if we can get that feedback to them by Friday, we can move forward with finalizing that plan. The last thing I wanted to share is, we met collectively with city council a few months ago, and President Somerville approached me about us working on a, a project together. So I'll, I'll be giving you more information on that soon. Just know that there's a lot of interest and energy around collective collaboration around bettering our community. So be on the lookout for that. And with that being said, that is the conclusion of my report. We will now move to treasurer's report. Mr. Pendleton?
No report this evening.
With that being said, actually, I do want to add one other thing. I'm so sorry. Before we go to committees, some of you or all of you may know, and Mrs. Fowler-Mack put it in the Friday notes around S B one, Senate Bill one, and the substitutes, some of the challenges we've been having with getting substitutes due to some shortages. That, I'll send you the full legislation, but I thought it was a, and again, I might be a nerd about this, but I thought it was a good read as far as what we, at least what we probably should know about how that law will impact our district and hopefully support us being able to get more substitutes to ease some of the burden that's happening in the classroom. So I just wanted to make sure I also mentioned that. And I could send you the full bill, and maybe I'm the only one who wanted to read the whole thing, but thought I, I would put that out there as well. And if you didn't see it in Friday's notes, you might want to read that too. And next, we'll go to committee reports, legal contracts and board policy. Mr. Alexander?
We have no report, but we have our next meeting on October the 18th, Monday, October the 18th.
Thank you very much. Finance and Capital Management, Mr. Bravo?
No report.
Thank you very much. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement?
Oh, brother.
Never know who's going to do it.
The Gold Star Committee has a report.
Mrs. McKittrick was looking.
So I'm going to start talking about the APS Plus After Hour Support Center. And it started about a year ago, October 5th, and in that one year's time, they logged over 1,700 calls with an average of 48 minutes for each of those calls. So here are some of the things that the staff included in that, and it included social, emotional learning, connections to community support organizations, answers to questions or concerns from families, clarifying public communications, and troubleshooting technology issues. And because of the success of that, there is hopefully going to be an expansion. And Ms. Autry is going to talk about the expansion.
Yes, thank you. So as many of us know, young people are often up pretty late at night. So in thinking about that, taking advantage of the opportunity to provide them support during those timeframes. So we're considering the possibility of offering these resources and services 24/7, seven days a week, and also just expanding our tutoring so that it encompasses the wide variety of our APS secondary educational coursework, also including ACT prep. One of the things that I was also excited to hear about us possibly exploring is having a writing paper or writing a lab review with a 12-hour turnaround, so young people can submit their papers and within 12 hours have some feedback. Also, it would include a, a robust report tracking tool so that our educators can use it as a resource to better support students who are identified through this expansion effort that might need additional support. We can coordinate together. And just making it more accessible and engaging for our young people. So that is forthcoming. Those are just some possibilities that we are exploring as we consider expanding our APS after hours.
And then last but not least, we have, I have two things to talk about. One is that we did have a discussion about both federal and state funding, which was no big surprise to those who, who normally sit in on finance, but we had good explanations of Title I, II, III, and IV, N I D E A, I D E A, and then how the law change in House Bill 110 affected the auxiliary services so that state money no longer passes through from us through charter to charter and private schools. I'm looking at Mr. Pendleton to make sure I don't screw this up. And, but that that federal funding still does, so that we will see those things still continue to pass through our district, which I hadn't understood that before we had our meeting. So it was, it was a good reminder, because that's federal funding, funding versus state funding. Did I get that all right? All right, good. I always try to trust my notes. And then, it is with great pleasure that I introduce Ms. Teck, who is going to take my rather feeble thank you to the University of Akron. And definitely, a little bird told me that there's more. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansfield. And Board of Education Superintendent Fowler-Mack, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Lisa Lenhart, Professor and Interim Director of the LeBron James Family Foundation School of Education at the University of Akron. Dr. Lenhart, on behalf of the Board of Education, our administration, staff, and students, please accept our heartfelt appreciation for the University of Akron's continued work and partnership with our schools. The work you are doing with our students and staff across the district, and particularly as our post-secondary partner at Akron Early College, Elit C L C, and STEM High School, is helping our students achieve their goals and fulfill their dreams. So thank you for your continued partnership. Dr. Lenhart?
I, I could have slipped out when we, when we skipped, which was fine, but I thought, no, I want to give the opportunity to say hello to everyone, to thank you for your partnerships. We're really happy about this renewal. As you know, the university's been in a big transition, but in my opinion, and I think it's the truth, the school of education is stronger than ever. We're, we're small, but we're mighty, and we are happy to be at the table. And I want you to know that. That comes from our president, Superintendent Fowler-Mack, and I, and President Miller, we all met. We are committed to being your university, and I, I want you to hear that, because we are right here in Akron, and we care about Akron Public Schools, and we have all these educators, and we work ways with Karen Gijic, and I are always finding different ways to work together. So I just want to thank you, and I appreciate getting to say a few words, because I want you to know that we mean that, and we are here for you, and we want to support your goals. Thank you.
I knew that couldn't be it when I just, I was like, we're not just going to let that go past, right? And as alum, I couldn't just let it just sit there, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Equity Committee. Dr. Hall?
No report. We are currently working on our next committee meeting date.
Thank you very much. We will move to new business, open discussion for the board on livable wage. And the district has started working on this, as you would have seen some of that information in Friday notes, and I didn't know if, before we opened it up for the board, if Superintendent Fowler-Mack wanted to share some of those comments as well.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, and to members of the board. I think in summary, the district is committed as well, under your charge, to ensuring that all of our staff are able to start from a basis of a livable wage. And towards that end, we have been engaged through our Human Resource Division, along with our Finance Division, in understanding our data and information, where everyone sits today, in the hopes of not only ensuring that livable wage, but in ways that are also looking through a lens of equity as well. So we hope in the very short term, we're embarking upon a audit of our practices here in the district, as you charged us to do in the advanced APS in III and III. And so we've been making great strides in that regard, and look forward to engaging you even further after you have this initial discussion with some more information about here's how we're approaching that work in the district. And then we'll definitely fold in any of your additional guidance and feedback this evening.
Thank you very much. So we'll open it up to everyone for discussion. I have three main items or questions I wanted to ask so that we can kind of keep our discussion as timely as possible, but also comprehensive. So the first one is, as we know that there is an audit being done, wanted to ask the board about what questions would they like answered when, in regards to the livable wage.
Sure. I'll, I'll jump in.
Dr. Hall, then Mr. Bravo?
So, so in general, you know, the question that I'm, I'm going to continually ask is going to be the timeline with which we actually sort of work our way through this process, right? So, you know, I know there are several of us that are up here serving that, that grew up with not a lot. And so, and so every week, every month that we wait or, or delayed, and I get that this has to happen in a way that's responsible and, and well thought out, but there has to be, but we also have to have to balance the tension of folks who are still living every day, every day, and I say every, yes, every day, right, that are folks who are living, you know, to pay the light, the light bill and to put food on the table, I mean, basic stuff, right? Basic stuff. So if it takes us six months to figure this out, that's six more months than people that we say are family, right, APS family, are having to go without. And so, so the, so the one thing that you're going to hear from, from me, and I'm sure others, I think, I suspect others you feel the same way, is a real sense of urgency about how do we, about how we attack this and go, and go about sort of addressing this, this topic, because there are folks who, in other organizations, who, who may seek to make muddy the waters and make this difficult, but it's not difficult. It's about trying to do the right thing in the right way, you know? And so, so having said all that, it's kind of my preamble. Questions about living wages, you know, is going to be, what are our, what are, what sources are we, are we utilizing to make a determination upon what a living wage is, right? So, because what you hear thrown out all the time is, oh, it's $15 an hour, right? And so, a lot of this talk started in Seattle. And I don't know if any of you have ever lived in Seattle or been in Seattle, but I'm telling you right now, $15 an hour is not a living wage in Seattle, Washington. It's not. You know, so, so it's about, so for me, it's about what, what sources are we going to be adherent to when we're, when we're, when we're trying to, you know, think up and really come up with the science of what the living wage is for Akron, Ohio? That's, that's kind of my overarching kind of question with respect to this particular topic. So who, who are we auditing, right? Because, I mean, APS is kind of a one of one in Summit County, so how far afoot are we going to go to get, you know, a, a good, a good sampling of, and what other, and what other factors are going to come into play? So, so when you think about an audit methodology, you know, there's typically a list of questions that you're going to ask, you know, so I'd like to, so, and again, part of this is us tonight giving some questions that we'd like to see asked, but there's probably more formalized folks who are experts in this field that have already developed tools around, in this particular area. So I'd like to, just for me, it's about who are the experts, you know, and what questions are they thinking that we're going to ask? And then again, timeline. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bravo?
Yes, thank you. Picking up on where Dr. Hall left out, that was one of my questions too, is just determining first for me what we're defining as a livable wage. I think that's obviously important. We all need to agree on a set of metrics, though I would, I would suggest that still we're focused here on a livable wage in our community. A livable wage in Seattle or Houston is going to be very different than Indianapolis or Akron, so I do think we need to focus a little bit on what a livable wage is here. I think it should somewhat be tied to, you know, the college and career paths that we put our students on and what a livable wage means there, because we've already done a lot of that research, and we've said that these career pathways will lead to jobs that make a livable wage. And so, let's, let's make sure we're including that in the discussion. And so, let's, let's make sure we're including that in the discussion. Once we know what a livable wage is, I think that audit will be really important, of course, to tell us who's there and who's not. And of those who are not, then we need to figure out which ones we can fix, and I'm using air quotes here for those of you not watching me, but that we can fix relatively easier, that we can address relatively easy. And then there are those that may be part of a larger discussion, even around collective bargaining. And all of that is going to have a financial impact on the district, and it's going to be a compounding effect, and we're going to need to take that into account. And obviously, I would love to see, you know, what that analysis is and what that does to, you know, our financials moving forward. Because all of that ties in, you know, which this discussion is important too, but we are putting a lot sort of in the cart, and we need to make sure that even as we're talking about adding new programs or services or things that also need to be sustainable using ARPA funding, how do we ensure that this is sustainable? And it's not, and it's very important. It's a discussion we've been talking about, and I brought up a few years ago, and I've shared this with all of you. So, we do need to just stay on top of it, but we also need to understand how it impacts us, how it impacts the classroom. So, anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I was gonna make sure, Mr. Bravo kind of brought up making sure that we watch and make sure we can sustain this here, because our budget, we gotta make sure that when you have monies going out, that you have monies coming in, so you can make sure that those bills are paid. And I really wanna see people have a good living wage, as well as Mr. Dr. Hall said, you know, coming up, not having anything, you understand that, but also, you know that it's important that people have living wages to help support them and their families. But also, we have to make sure that we're doing it for our area too, because as you go around the globe, a living wage in some places are not the same as it should be in another area. And we want to make sure we don't, that we, our budget is gonna be balanced, and we're gonna be able to move it out as we move forward. So, that is what I had to, and also, and to make sure that we stay within our policy of what we would have in the bank, Mr. Penn, and I forgot, I didn't have the right name for it, but in our policy of what it says we need to have in the bank, so we can be able to sustain business as we move forward, in case we hit to that point where we have to dip into that, will we be able to, will the district be able to still stay afloat versus taking the dive? So, looking at that as well. Thank you.
Our cash reserve policy?
Reserve, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Autry?
Thank you. I'm happy that this is on the table, finally. I concur with everything everyone has said thus far. And I just want to challenge this district to focus more on why we can versus why we cannot. I can't help but think about the family liaisons that I met with during the ad hoc communications committee, and, you know, they're making $11 an hour, but we expect so much from them. Some of them are retired social workers. And so, we want them to go out and connect with our families and do all of these different things and be those eyes for us. They should be compensated appropriately. But everyone in our district has a value, and so I just want to challenge us as a district to make sure that our priorities reflect that. So, and then also, just looking at some other organizations, you know, there's no need to recreate the will. Who's already done this? And how did they do it? And so, just to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Hall was saying, we have folks living every day, trying to make ends meet while we're deciding, you know, these things. So, that's what I'd like to contribute and say, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We probably answered this question, but it was, the next one was overall goal. Do you want to add any discretion to overall goal? Ms. McKittrick?
To pick up on what Ms. Autry said, I think it's important, especially when we look at the folks we have who work for APS, and I'll, again, pick up on what she said about our family liaisons, making $11.32 or something an hour. Don't misunderstand me what I'm about to say next, but I could go get a job in a fast food restaurant and make $4 or $5 more an hour, and that's fine. I'm not criticizing that work, but what I'm saying is, these are people with much different expectations when they go to work, right? From us and from themselves, we expect them to establish relationships with our families. We expect them to do the good work of everything that is involved in being a family liaison, but we're paying them $11 an hour. And again, if you get a job at a fast food restaurant, the responsibility is quite different, right? But I could be making $4 or $5 more dollars an hour with very different expectations put on me. And so, I think we really do need to ask ourselves, what are our priorities? What do we want for the people who work most often with our children? And how do we fairly compensate them? I say this every time, I don't begrudge any of the salaries that people at the top of this organization make, but I think, by the same token, we have to look at what the people at the bottom of the organization mean, and that doesn't sound good either, but I think you know what I mean. Admin versus non-admin. And those folks who are working day in and day out with our children, who are making $10 or $11 an hour, we have to find a way to do better by them. I'm not sure how that looks right now, or what has to happen, but we can't expect, put the expectations that we have on them, and we're paying them poorly. How can we expect them to have fidelity to this organization, to do the job we want them to do with our children, if we don't respect what they do enough to pay them appropriately? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansfield?
I'm gonna make this really quick. This has always been something that has been discussed. I think that what brought it to the forefront of our minds on our focus was when we were all remote, and a lot of these folks were not. And I think that that helped bring into focus truly what essential means in the last two years. And if you're essential, we want to make sure that that is recognized. The other thing that I think that could be a focus is not only the livable wage that they're making now, but also the work that's being done in this district to help people that do work well with our students, that do know our organization, to move up within the organization. And that work has been ongoing and is continuing, so that taking those who always wanted to do something even greater with our students, maybe they wanted to be a teacher, but were sidetracked for one reason or another, we are helping those people to do that. So, making that part of this as well. How is, what does that look like? It may be that, I know there was some discussion as to whether tuition assistance should be paid back to the individual, or whether we could do some more of it upfront. So, those are just other ways that it can be compensation without it necessarily being, well, let's say this way, it's that, in conjunction with your hourly wage, not just in spite of it. So, just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a comment about the tuition assistance piece. You know, you make $11, $12 bucks an hour, you know, having to pay it up front out of pocket. That's just bullshit, okay? I'm just, I'm gonna say what it is. You know, and so, so we gotta look at a way, you know, to do that upfront, you know? Bring me your class schedule, we'll pay it directly to the University of Akron or Kent State, you know, so that way no one can be accused of misappropriating, or I gave you a check and you spent it on something else, right? I mean, I mean, that just really incenses me, you know, obviously. So, that's, and I do think, I do think, you know, President Obama talked about this, you know, 12 years ago, right, about creating ladders of opportunity, right, for people? You know, and so, that's something that, that I think that, you know, I think we do that in some respects here, but I think, but I don't know the ladders extend all the way to the first floor of a really large building, you know, for folks who are lunch ladies and, you know, things like that, you know, and lunchmen, if we have some of those as well, that maybe want to do more, you know, how are we encouraging them, you know, how are we counseling them, you know, to do more, you know, if they have, if they have that desire? You know, and so, I have seen other organizations that do the tuition assistance on the back end, and people who are making the least amount of money, they never take advantage of it, and HR is always asking, why? Well, because they can't afford to. You know, they can't afford to front money, they can't afford to front the money. So, anyway, so I think, I think that's something, as Ms. Mansfield pointed, as we, as we roll this out, I think that's something that we're gonna have to be, that should be built into this, if we're really gonna be a compassionate and caring organization. So, my apologies for the profanity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, the next item, just wanted to think about timeline. When we, when we think about when we want a draft plan to begin looking at what's our expectation around timeline? Ms. Alexander?
I don't specifically have a specific timeline, but I think that should be something that our CFO and superintendent and staff and all look at that timeline. And we can make suggestions if we want to, as to what we think should be, as far as the timeline, that's fine, but we should have some input, and we can say that, but I think, make sure we allow them the time. You know, I know we don't want to put, make it too long of a time, but also, we want to make sure that gives them time to look at that, make sure all the things that we're asking that they gather gets to be done, and then look at that and move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll opine one last time on this. You know, the timeline component, I'd agree with Mr. Alexander. I don't know that, you know, we put in place an arbitrary timeline. I think it's gotta be something that makes sense. I mean, I think that the people here on this board and in this room, you know, if we believe, and I believe, you know, if we believe that the people that are in this room are committed to doing this, then I don't know that setting a date is necessary. I think that, you know, to a certain degree, there has to be, there has to be some trust that the people that are in this room, all of us who are in this room, are gonna prioritize this work, you know? And so, if everything's important to you, then nothing's important to you, right? So, how do we, so what do we take off our plate, you know, to make sure that this work gets the attention that it deserves in order to be accomplished in a timely fashion? You know, so I'm very tempted, you know, I'd love to say 30 days, right? I mean, but at the same time, you know, we want to, we do want to make sure that this gets done right, and is thoughtful and makes sense, you know, and so, but for the time being, I'm happy to be guided by the judgment of those who are, who are doing this every day, so.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Bravo?
Would we just leave this on the agenda and just update at each meeting moving forward? And there may be some updates on some information that's collected, and there may not be, but at least if it's on the agenda, we know we can check in on it without setting an arbitrary timeline?
Yeah, I think we could do that. It may, it may be more strategic to maybe, and this is my thought process, to ask for an update once a month until we get to a point where there's actually steady flow of information and data. Because if, one of my concerns is if we keep it on the agenda as a perfunctory item, then we never know when we really need a report or an update. And it also manages all of our expectations too. So, we'll just work on that to just have it maybe every month, pretty much like one month from today, and get updates from there. All right, Ms. Autry?
Yes, thank you. I mentioned it already, and I just wanted to mention it again, that, you know, we don't have to recreate the will. I know I'm a little prejudiced, but my employer right up the street, Akron Children's Hospital, did this back in 2019. So, I'm sure they have a lot of valuable data that we could probably utilize, and we're already in relationship with them anyway. So, whomever's doing this work, I think that would be a good resource to tap into, because they've already done it.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, and also, I know, because we have corporate organizations out there that function in one way, and we function as another school, but also maybe looking at some other school districts who may have done something like this here, because we're talking about government funds and so forth, that we need to make sure that we're staying within the realm there. And looking at Children's Hospital, maybe looking at Soma, whomever it may be, is not, there's nothing wrong with looking at those organizations as well.
Thank you very much. So, I think we've had a pretty good discussion about what our needs are and thoughts, and also, as we went along, Superintendent Fowler-Mack was showing a clear agreement with many of the comments. Also, in our discussion previously, I think what was shared today was in the plan for some of the discussion that the district was already working on. So, it sounds like we're all in good alignment. The one thing I wanted to add is, as I thought about this and topic, and I've said it before, I think we are in such a time as this, we're in a moment where we can begin to look at education to solve long-held problems, instead of hoping and wishing we had solutions. So, I think we have an opportunity in this time to bring those solutions forward and begin that process. I think we also, in our management of being fiduciaries of the funds that are given to us by our citizens, we also have a responsibility to ensure that their kids and their kids' kids get the highest quality of education. And what that means is an investment that we all need to make. And so, one of the things I think we also need to look at as we're continuing this conversation is to look at how often we put a levy on the ballot. And I know people hate that word when we say levy, antennas come up, but at the end of the day, the levy is not a bad word, it's an investment. And we're investing in our schools, which all of us want to have the best schools. When we live in this community, we, it helps not only with our property values, but more importantly, it helps ensure that our neighbors and their kids and their grandchildren have what they need, so they don't resort to crime or any other type of activity out of desperation that happens because people are desperate. And I think that that is really the impetus around the discussion around livable wage. This is about modeling, I believe, what we want our students to end with. And I think, I think it was Mr. Bravo, but it might have been Mrs. Mansfield, mentioned linking it to our college and career academies and what we're sharing with our students already. So, I think this is really our time to celebrate our essential employees for the work that they do to provide our district the stable foundation that we have, but then also look to the future and provide that launching pad for our kids and grandkids and future neighbors, and those who will take care of us when we get older. So, thank you very much for indulging us in that value-added discussion. Next on our agenda, if there's nothing else, we do have a need to recess into executive session, and there will likely be a need to convene for a action afterwards. And so, I will entertain a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 for the purposes of considering the employment dismissal, discipline and compensation of a public employee or official of the school district.
So, moved.
Second? It's been properly moved by Dr. Hall, seconded by Mr. Bravo. Any discussion? Hearing is seen, none. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now stand in recess into executive session.
Yes, it's starting to change time to do those clocks.
And the resolution.
Then I finish this.
Fall back.
Yeah. Twenty nine point one.
Okay.
And he's, he's good. Okay. We're good.
Okay. Hello everyone and welcome back to the regularly scheduled board meeting on 11 October 2021. We've just returned from executive session with an action potentially necessary from this body. And I'll entertain a motion to entertain a motion regarding the resolution in twenty nine point one.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Dr. Hall to move forward with the resolution of rescheduling for a staff member. Any discussion, I'm sorry, yeah, any discussion on that motion? Hearing saying none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Pendleton.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and in interest of time, we decided to come back from executive session as we had that action to potentially take. And now we have a need to return back into executive session. And so I'll entertain a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code one two one point two two G one for the purposes of considering the employment of a public employee or official of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Autry, seconded by Mr. Bravo. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please, Mr. Pendleton.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We stand, we stand in recess again.
Welcome and good evening and welcome back to the regularly scheduled board meeting. Akron Public Schools on 11 October 2021. We have just returned from executive session and there is no further action to come before the board, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second? Oh, miss, sorry, Mr. Bravo has seconded it. Thank you very much. We adjourn.
You got a problem? I don't know. It's fine. If you can't leave it, we can't leave it.